And we'll go ahead and call to order the October 5th, 2015, meeting of the Salina City Commission. And can we please get a roll call?
Mayor Blanchard.
Here.
Commissioner Crawford.
Here.
Commissioner Davis.
Here.
Commissioner Hardy.
Here.
Commissioner Ryan.
Here.
Okay, thank you. At this time, I would ask that all of you who are able to please stand and join in the Pledge of Allegiance, followed by a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of which we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Okay, we do have awards and proclamations today, so we'll go ahead and get started there.
Item 3.1, "The Day of October 11th, 2015," as our Veterans Now and Forever Day in the City of Salina. Bob Wickwire, VFW Past Commander, will read the proclamation.
Mr. Wickwire, thank you for being here.
Mr. Mayor, council members, thank you for allowing us to attend and adopting our resolution. Whereas, the Ladies Auxiliary of the Veterans of Foreign Wars of the United States is conducting its 102nd year of volunteer service to America, whereas, year after year, the organization continues to honor those who have made the ultimate sacrifice in the name of freedom by maintaining memorials to their service and sharing their history with our nation's youth, so that what our nation's veterans have done for America will not be forgotten. Whereas, the Ladies Auxiliary of the Veterans of Foreign War, the troops currently deployed overseas, whereas, 450,000 members represent the families of those who have served or are currently on foreign soil protecting our freedom, whereas, the members and volunteers nearly 1 million hours of Veteran Affairs, medical centers, and other hospitals throughout our country. Whereas, the organization provides awards, scholarships, and students based upon their experiences in patriotism through the acts of speech and volunteerism. Whereas, the 2015-2016 National President Francesca Gilleford is rallying Ladies Auxiliary members behind her name and behind her theme, "Our Veterans Now and Forever." Whereas, October 11th, 2015, will be the time to celebrate her visit to Salina, Kansas, and I do hereby declare October 11th, 2015, as our Veterans Now and Forever Day. In honor of the National President Francesca Gilleford and all of her members of the Ladies Auxiliary of the Veterans of Foreign Wars for their outstanding volunteer service to our veterans and to their families. And to Salina, Kansas, of Salina, and to our great country.
Okay, great.
We'd ask that the city adopt this proclamation and present it for our use.
Great, and we have, and we do honor October 11th as our Veterans Now and Forever Day in the City of Salina, so thank you for bringing that forward to us, and I know that you have a number of activities planned for that day, and so I'd just have you share.
Full day of activities, yes, sir.
Yeah. If you'd like to share those with us, we'll love to hear about them.
Thank you, sir. We will be having a dinner, which we cordially invited you to, and our lovely auxiliary member. It'll be starting at 7:00, and thank you.
Okay, thank you. By the way, I just sent in my dues.
Should've saved the stamp.
Well, thank you both, and I have your signed proclamation for you here, if you'd like to take this. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, Bob.
Okay, that's 7:00 PM at the VFW, or?
VFW.
Okay, on Crawford. Okay, great, thank you. Okay. That was all of that for today, okay? All right, we'll move on to Citizens Forum, and this is a time for citizens to address the commission on any items that may be of concern to them that are not already listed on today's agenda, and we just ask that you please limit your comments to five minutes, so if there's anyone that has anything to share, Citizens Forum is open.
Karen Shade, 111, Wisconsin. I just wanted to remind the commissioners and alert the public that talks Salina will be having a conversation or discussion on October 7th about what should we do to address criminal justice issues in Salina. The discussion will include the topics of incarceration, rehabilitation, prevention, and legal options. It's an open event, and all are welcome. Both discussions are being held on October 7th. At one time is at 4:00 PM at the Library Learning Center, and the second time is at 7:00 PM at the Chamber of Commerce Annex, and if you have questions or seeking additional information, you can call 819-6887. Some people say we need a bigger jail, and others say jails don't help. Some people say we need more programs for changing behavior, and others say these are too expensive. Some say we need systematic changes, so minor offenses and drugs don't lead to jail time, and others want to stay with what we have. So there's many views on this topic, and I'm hoping that you can join and be part of it.
Okay, thank you, Karen.
Thank you.
Hey, I have a quick question for you, though. We got your flyer up here. Are the meetings at 4:00 and 7:00 going to be the same information, or would people want to go to both of them?
I believe the correct way to respond, and I'm not the best person to respond, but the topic will be the same, the conversations may be very different, because it will be, my understanding is, small table discussions, and if we sit with different people, we may hear different discussions.
Okay, okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, anymore, no more, going once, going twice, closed. Okay, we have no public hearings or items scheduled for a certain time, so we'll move into the consent agenda.
Item 6.1, approve the minutes of September 21st, 2015. Item 6.2, adopt Resolution Number 15-7286, appointing members to various boards and commissions. Item 6.3, authorize the purchase of 1,942 folding chairs from Spec Seats International Corporation in the amount of $105,353.50, and 750 banquet chairs from Michigan Tube Swaggers and Fabricators Incorporated in the amount of $44,625 for the Salina Bicentennial Center. Item 6.4, authorize the mayor to approve change order number 1 for laboratory support, chemical testing of vapor to ESC Lab Science Corporation in the amount of $1,515. Change order number 5 for laboratory support, chemical testing of soil, sediment, and water to Continental Analytical Services Incorporated in the amount of $180, and change order number 5 for surveying support to Wilson &amp; Company Incorporated Engineers and Architects in the amount of $390, and change order number 5 for drilling support to Environmental Priority Service Incorporated in the amount of $1,700.
Okay, thank you. Is there any items that anyone would like to have removed or amended from the consent agenda?
I would move to approve the...
Let me, I'm trying to work through a note here. Is Mr. Stack have something on the consent agenda that he needs to clarify? Or is it on item 7.?
I think it's on the text amendment, is that right?
Okay, that's item 7.2, that's not on the consent agenda.
I didn't think it was.
Okay, and I know that, okay, we'll hit that on 7.2 then, okay. I know everybody's really curious about Michigan Tube Swaggers, and we see the bicentennial folks here, but I think we're good on that, so I'll go ahead and take that motion.
Okay, thank you.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda as presented. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes 5-0. Okay, now we'll move on to administration.
Item 7.1, second reading ordinance number 15-10802, amending Section 4 of the city's electric franchise with West Star Energy, increasing the franchise fee percentage from 5% to 6% effective January 1, 2016.
Okay. Ordinance number 15-10802 was passed on first reading September 21st, 2015. Since that time, we have received no comments, and we will accept public comment at this time, if there is any at this time. Okay, and seeing none, we'll bring it back to the commission for action.
I move that we approve ordinance number 15-10802 on second reading.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second to approve ordinance number 15-10802 on second reading. Any further discussion? Okay, seeing none, we'll have a roll call, please.
Commissioner Crawford.
Aye.
Commissioner Davis.
Aye.
Commissioner Hardy.
Aye.
Commissioner Ryan.
Aye.
Mayor Blanchard.
Aye, that passes 5-0.
Mayor, quick comment on that. Just want to be sure that I'm clear, as we try to keep these consistent, that you are still comfortable with me bringing to an action to initiate negotiation with the gas company for the same reason.
Well, no objection.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, 7.2?
Item number 7.2, second reading ordinance number 15-10805, amending Chapter 35, Article 6, entitled "Driveways and Sidewalks," and Chapter 31, Article 7, Division 1 of the Property Maintenance Code of the City of Salina pertaining to concrete work within rights of way. 7.2A is Resolution Number 15-7282, adopting specifications for concrete work. 7.2B, Resolution Number 15-7283, adopting sidewalk and driveway repair criteria.
Okay. Ordinance number 15-10805 was passed on first reading September 21st, 2015, and I understand on this item, Mr. Stack has a clarification to make.
Just have a sentence in the concrete specifications for driveways, or let me see, make sure that I've got it here. Specifications for concrete work has a under curve and gutter on page 2, the first paragraph at the very end, "Controlled joints shall be at five-feet intervals," is what they'd like me to add. Five-feet intervals is what we should say.
What page was that again?
Page 2 of the, this would be page 74 of the actual packet, if you have all your pages there, but it's page 2 of the concrete specifications.
Curve and gutter?
Yeah.
That's a resolution, on the regulation.
It's page 2.
On page 74 of the packet, it'd be the paragraph directly under the heading "Curved and Gutter."
Yeah.
It's the last sentence of that paragraph.
It's page 2. It's after Resolution Number 157282, right after that. It's the second page after that.
Anybody able to find that?
Was that the first paragraph under "Curved and Gutter"?
Yep, it is.
Okay.
My pages aren't numbered, I'm sorry.
The document in question is titled " specifications for concrete work, Salina, Kansas revised September 2015."
Okay, those are numbered, so.
Yeah.
And then it has a footnote of 9-17-15 DRS. So, page 2 of that document.
It's in the blue sheet. Do you have the updated blue sheet?
Oh, I guess I'm not looking at the updated blue sheet.
Yeah, they gave us an update.
Yeah, you've only got 113 pages to go through, so.
That's probably why. Okay, okay, page 2?
Yes, under the "Curved and Gutter" heading, that first paragraph, the last sentence, currently reads, "Unless directed by the engineer, all control joints shall be of five feet." It needs to read "at five-foot intervals."
Be at five-feet interval? Okay. Okay. And that's part of Resolution, when the motion is made and the action taken, that is on Resolution 7282.
Correct.
That portion of that, okay. Okay, so our actions will be first on ordinance, on second reading of the ordinance, and then we'll take action on the two resolutions.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Stack. At this time, is there any public comment on these items? Okay, seeing none, we'll bring it back for action.
Mr. Mayor, move adoption on second reading, ordinance number 15-10805, amending Chapter 35, Article 6, entitled "Driveways and Sidewalks," and Chapter 31, Article 7, Division 1 of the Property Maintenance Code of the City of Salina pertaining to concrete work within rights of way. Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second to approve on second reading, ordinance number Is there any further discussion at this time? Okay, seeing none, we'll have another roll call, please.
Commissioner Crawford.
Aye.
Commissioner Davis.
Aye.
Commissioner Hardy.
Aye.
Commissioner Ryan.
Aye.
Mayor Blanchard.
Aye, that passes 5-0. Take action now on the companion items?
These should be done separately?
Yeah, we'll do them separately.
Move for adoption of Resolution Number 15-7282, adopting specifications for concrete work with the correction or addition is recently added. Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second to approve Resolution Number 15-7282, adopting specifications for concrete work with additions, with the edits. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? That passes 5-0.
And Mr. Mayor, move for adoption of Resolution Number 15-7283, adopting sidewalk and driveway repair criteria. Second.
Have a motion and a second to adopt Resolution 15-7283, adopting sidewalk and driveway repair criteria. Any further discussion on this item? Okay, seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That passes 5-0 also.
Item 7.3, Resolution Number 15-7284, authorizing the mayor to execute an extension to management agreement with Global Spectrum LP to extend the term of the Bicentennial Center management agreement for an additional one year.
Okay, Mr. Louthen, I knew there was more than just chairs and volunteer.
Always, always. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, commissioners. As Shandy said, the item before you is an opportunity, if we so choose, to execute a management agreement with Global Spectrum. We initially contracted with them in March of 2012, so we have three, four years under our belt. Last year, you approved a one-year term. We have one additional one-year term that we can do, and that's what we're bringing to you today. So that would be, or complete the original management agreement, if we chose to today, to renew. As you know, we've had a lot of stuff going on over there. Global's done a fantastic job for us, managing the facility while we've been in transition with all the construction, trying to hold our events over there, yet at the same time, continue to drive traffic to the arena and make it a space that's utilized and constantly trying to get folks in there and maximize the facility and the uses of it. As such, though, it would be remiss without me saying, too, that this year, our revenues are down just a little bit from what our projections, what we'd like them to be. We still have three or four months left here to try to drive those up, but they are down from what our projections were. Our expenditures are also down, too, though, so those somewhat slide in harmony, but again, would be remiss without saying that. I brought today for you, if you'd like to visit with them, Rick Hauntz, who's the Regional Vice President for Global Spectrum, Ron Rideout, who is the General Manager of the facility, and I think most of you folks know him, and then Kevin Brisky, who is the new Assistant General Manager there. So, got those folks here to answer any questions you might have specific to the facility and their plans for the future, but we believe they've done a really good job of starting to understand our market, get a feel for what works, what doesn't, how they can leverage their contacts in the industry to really bring the right events to us, and we hope to continue to see those grow as we complete more and more of the renovations, and they continue to drive traffic our way. So with that, we'd stand for questions.
Okay, any questions for staff? I'd just like to make the comment that I appreciate your, you know, your attention to the revenues and the expenses, and how they may be down slightly this year, but I think we would also be remiss not to mention, too, that we've undergone a major renovation, and we have not had to close down for one day of that. So, I think all in all, in the balance of things, had we not had that level of expertise and professionalism in the management, we probably would be down a little bit more, would you say, because of having to close the venue for different events?
I think it's a fair statement to say that the staff there and Global Spectrum did a great job of helping to mitigate those potential losses by driving traffic. Also, McCown Gordon, terrific job with their ability to help us have those events and find creative ways to get traffic into the building and hold different stuff. So I think it was a combination of efforts. Frew was very helpful in coordinating a lot of those things and really working behind the scenes. Again, when you add that all up, I think it was a good collaborative team effort to, again, not perfect by any stretch, but gave us a chance to make it function as best it could during this period. And we're really, really close here to wrapping up all but a couple items that we will intend to do next summer.
Right. I'm sorry, go ahead.
I was just gonna say, well, we have a report at the end of this year that says how many activities there were, what events there were, and how many people attended those events?
We have, yes, the business plan that we develop, we do a three-year model, if you will. Now, again, we're only approving one year of this, but it will be a three-year forecast that we've traditionally brought to you latter part of November, early December, and that'll go through the full performance to where we're at and how we stand, and if there's certain things that you want us to include, we could absolutely do that, but we have that data, if you want to look at it.
Do you have any of those numbers in your head, or is that Mr. Rideout's?
I'm gonna probably call the righthander out of the bullpen and have Ron see if he can try to answer some of those.
Please, no curveballs.
No curveballs. What specific numbers could I assist with?
Well, our facility, I'm speaking specifically to the arena itself, and the information that we're given is the attendance and the event days, but that includes small meetings and small conferences and all kinds of things. I'm interested primarily in the arena side of things, and I know that, I would say comfortably that our arena could handle 2,500 people for a concert.
Sure.
Something like that. And I know that we don't have all of our rigging in place yet that would facilitate that kind of activity in the arena as well, but, so the question I have is, how many, can you give me a ballpark of average attendance in this last year for events that have been held in the arena itself?
So, kind of breaking out the attendance from Heritage Hall to the arena?
Breaking out what?
You're looking to kind of separate the two facilities as far as attendance?
Correct, correct.
I don't know that I can give you that number off the top of my head, I'm not prepared to answer that. It's definitely a figure we can get. We show every event and the attendance it makes, you know, for every day and every month.
I haven't seen very many events where I saw numbers over 2,000.
Okay.
And my only concern there is that we already have a facility that can handle 1,200, and I was hoping for a facility that could
Sure.
bring us a different market.
Sure.
A different kind of attendance that could, you know, bring in more people for more restaurants, more hotels, all that kind of stuff.
We have a significant number of our sporting events, I would say, close to all, bring in substantially more than that number, all of our football games, all of our events with KESHA, basketball, wrestling, you know, even volleyball has some fairly high numbers, depending on the teams that are in it.
But that's over a several-day period of time, correct?
Correct, but each individual day is bringing in substantial numbers for the overall length of the run. You know, football games in their own right are well over 2,500 in attendance on average for those kind of things. Monster Truck Show is a two-day event, both days, well over 2,000 people in the building for things like that. So, we have a substantial number of events. We had a Casting Crown concert in last July that brought in over 2,000 people. Both tickets sold, and as far as bodies in the building as well, so.
See, we're doing a significant amount of work at the Bi-Center, including buying new seats.
Sure.
And I would like to have those seats utilized.
Sure.
And as Mr. Louthen mentioned, he used a couple words, utilized, maximized, and I like the sound of those words. But I'm hoping that we can, down the road, make those words a reality.
Sure, that is the intention.
Much more than what we've seen in the past, just to fully utilize the arena side.
Yeah, and I think that the components of this remodel have, well, those are the things that, the reason why we did the remodel, I mean, was to get to those groups that can bring the numbers in, and we've still got a little ways to go. I mean, the rigging and so on will be a few months down the road, but I think that we're on the right track on that thing. And I'll just add on the, as far as the chairs, the chairs are for, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, but the chairs are for banquet seating, are they not, for the Heritage Hall site, for...
There are two kinds. There's, and you're, in the consent agenda there, there were some specifically for Heritage Hall, as in past, they had been using, we had been using folding chairs and a banquet setting, and I know we visited briefly about that. You know, you pull one of those chairs out and it collapses, which is what it's supposed to do, but not on a banquet setting. And then on the other side, there are new chairs for the arena. Those would be, you know, for floor seating or seating in the bleachers for different, you know, events and whatnot, so it is a combination of both. Right. Commissioners, one thing, too, and I think we will have some extra opportunities, some bigger opportunities, when we get the rigging and we can have heavier shows, larger shows, but there's a few things that, when I think about it, both from work for the city and also from a patron's perspective. One thing, we are fortunate in Salina, there are a lot of things to do on any given weekend and weekday nights. That's a good thing for our community, but certainly creates competing environments, especially for like a concert. But the other thing is, is it has to do with the risk. The higher potential for filling up the place means you're getting a name that's higher and higher up the list, and when you get a name that's higher and higher up the list, the risk goes up as far as the cost of bringing that group or person into the facility, and I think that's one thing, when we have the rigging and we have the potential for a heavier show, a lot of the modern shows are heavier, they'll probably be coming to us and saying, "Okay, Jason, we've got a pretty good name here, but your risk is going to be a little bit higher on this," and then we'll look at that and work with them, because we trust their ability to go back and track that performer and kind of figure out how they've done a different venue similar to ours, and what their thought is on that. But to fill more seats, you are talking about typically a higher risk factor, too. We've done really well so far with that piece.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, commissioners. I just wanted to add a couple things. One, with the renovations you guys approved and were accomplishing, that's one thing that we're excited to take to the streets, to the agents and promoters, and show them what we've done here, because I think it's very key. Salina, the Bicentennial Center is known out there in the market. They've been known for years. It's not a matter of putting that on the map. What it was lacking was proper management and as far as the, you know, the renovations and bringing it up to speed, up to, you know, up to the part like the usability of where the doors are now. We have a ticket office now that you can go, and you don't have to go to a main area. Those are really big things that we plan on sharing, and we have been sharing with the agents, but we want to take pictures, we were talking about that, we need to get out and show them. about that, we need to get out and show them what we have. And some of the events, and another point, too, some of the events that we get 2,500 people to could be considered home runs for us. Understand the economics of the business. For example, the building that I'm based out of this on Sunday, you know, we paid $20,000 for the Prices Right Live, which is a great show, and we had 2,200, 2,300 people in the building, and it was a home run for us. We made a lot of money on it, and it was a very entertaining event, so it's not always measured on if we get 6,000 people in there. Yeah, we do want that, and we'll get those shows, especially after the grid's done. But I think it's also the economics of the events. Sometimes we have multi-day shows, like Sesame will come in for a few performances, so we might not have 3,000 one time, but we will have it over the course of the run. But I think, I think Ron's doing a great job getting, getting us out there, and certainly we're on the radar of all the agents, they know what we're doing, that we know what we're trying to accomplish with the renovations. The building is looking fantastic, from what I was four years ago, and it's just amazing the difference, and we're looking forward to getting that out to the, to the market and really showing what you guys put behind the building, so.
Thank you.
Okay, any more questions for staff or Deion in particular?
Nope.
Not at this time. We'll go ahead and take public comment, though, at this time, and if anybody would like to share anything or ask anything. Okay, seeing none, we'll bring it back for further discussion and action.
Mr. Mayor, move adoption resolution number 15-7284, authorizing the mayor to execute an extension management agreement with Global Spectrum, LP to extend the term of the Bi-Centennial Center Management Agreement for an additional one year.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second to approve resolution 15-7284, executing an extension to management agreement with Global Spectrum, LP to extend the term of the Bi-Centennial Center Management Agreement for an additional one year. Any further discussion at this time? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That passes 5-0. Thank you, Deion, and thank you, Rick, Ron, and Kevin. Appreciate it, thanks.
Item 7.4, resolution number 15-7287, authorizing the mayor to sign the Construction Engineering Services Work Estimate with Cal Valley Engineering and the Kansas Department of Transportation for the Greeley Bridge replacement over the Old Smoky Hill River Channel, project number 08-2709.
Okay, what bridge was that again? I'm kidding, Greeley Avenue Bridge for?
Greeley Avenue Bridge.
Well, everybody says, when are you gonna redo the Greeley Avenue Bridge? So, Mr. Stack, please.
Yes, let's start, yeah, it's getting closer. It's exciting. It's, we've had quite a bit of background on this bridge. This is actually for the construction engineering portion of the, when the bridge is being built, KDOT has agreements with state consultants that work for the state that do inspection services, and so they really, we don't have to be actually a party to the agreement anymore like we used to. We just sign off on what we believe is the fair estimate of the compensation for those services, as well as make sure we have the right consultant that we think can do the job. In this case, like Cal Valley, who's designing the bridge, has the resources to inspect the construction as well and fill out the appropriate reports, and they ask us to sign off on the estimate. There is a lot of background here, as you know, I put a few of the key dates in here. In May of 2014, we asked for some funding from KDOT, and we did receive that assistance, and it's an 80/20 split, 80% paid by KDOT, 20% by the city. November 10th of 2014, we hired Cal Valley to help us design the bridge, and then in April of 2015, we authorized the agreement with KDOT to actually, for the funding, federal aid funding for the bridge. It's gonna look similar to Lakewood Park, Lakewood Park Bridge, kind of from the top. Underneath, it'll be quite a bit different, but it's still a single reinforced haunch slab, has the span for the river. Master plan that we are hopeful that will occur someday, has a good opening, it'll have room for a hiking bike trail underneath it, and, see, the bid's actually open at KDOT on October 21st, so we're getting closer. And currently, it's estimated at $540,000 for construction and then $78,966 for the construction engineering services, that's what this action is for today, and right now, they're estimating our matching funds, 20% of those two numbers, at $126,000 so far. So, I mean, that's pending good bids. It is a little worrisome. The last few years, bridge, bridge work has really gotten to be front and center in the whole nation, so it's, they're fixing bridges everywhere in the US, and it's very, it's a very big deal, even when there's not a whole lot of money. That's the thing that gets funded first, so there's, the bridge guys are busy. But the hope is, we'll get some bids, it's good work, it's currently closed, so they don't have to worry about big, you know, traffic control issues, and they'll be excited to get it open. We did ask them to try to get it finished by River Festival 2016, so that is, they've got that in their, in their bid at this time. But of course, you never know on the weather, so it's, it's estimated for 90 working days, which doesn't seem, I'd say, only a few months, right? But it's working days in January, February, and March are half of the days you could get in the rest of the year, so, and even June, or March, April, and May, you have more rain days, so anyway, the working days barely get it by the River Festival if we have good weather, so we'll see. We'll hope for the best on that, it should be at least close by that point, if not. So, as you said, this Greeley Bridge, what other questions do you have?
I think we ought to do a dance for Greeley Bridge.
Let's wait till it's built first.
On Greeley Bridge.
I think so.
Are you requesting a couple of minutes here?
Well, yeah, I mean, we've been talking about this forever, it seems like.
That's great. Any questions for staff?
So is the timeframe considered aggressive?
From KDOT's perspective, it is. You'd think, well, if we bid it in October, you know, if they start in January, they're still in good shape, but it just takes a while, and they're really booked up. That's what their concern is. I looked at a lot of the different lettings they have, and they're, the late start date, they have an early starting date, they tell the contractor, you must start by a certain date. So they'll have an early date, and they'll have a late date, and so they typically allow them about six months before they start, typically. So we're pushing them a little bit to start, and we're trying to get them to start in three months or less, so we'll see.
Sometimes when you put unusual constraints on contractors, they tend to price Right. that kind of thing into the project, and so I was wondering if that might have a deleterious effect on bid prices, perhaps?
Yeah, we're giving them, early start date is earlier than January, and then late start date's January, so I, you know, you would hope that January would be a good time to start work for the new year and new contractors, but I guess we'll see. If the bids come in really high, we'll have to reevaluate, I guess.
Okay. Doesn't look like any other questions up here at this time. Do we have any public comment at this time? Okay, seeing none, we'll bring it back for action.
I move we approve resolution number 15-7287, authorize the mayor to sign the Construction Engineering Services Work Estimate with Cal Valley Engineering and the Kansas Department of Transportation for the Greeley Bridge replacement over the Old Smoky Hill River Channel, project 082709.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to approve resolution number 15-7287. Is there any further discussion at this time? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That passes 5-0. Thank you.
Item 7.5, authorize the change of no parking zone currently located only on the south side of Iron Avenue from Ohio Street to Marymount Road to no parking on both sides of the roadway to accommodate bike lanes.
Okay.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners.
Is there more?
Two stacks.
Oh. I think that was the stack.
I think that's one stack. Sorry about that. We're good with that.
Well, do I have more here?
Do you have one of each?
You've got one of these, at least, and then that one.
Here you go. You're gonna need one of those.
Oh.
And there, and then I'll take those. I'll take that stack.
My bad.
Okay.
Yeah, you should have two, you should have a public comments for the parking and then a letter from David Miller.
I only got two.
And any extras, I'll take back and give to my boss.
Need the second stack.
Yeah, thank you.
I don't know if we're gonna be able to do this one or not. Okay, I think everybody good and everybody has one of each. I think we're ready to go. Mr. Stack.
All right. The request was brought to us last week about the bike lanes that are proposed on Iron Avenue, and as part of the, you know, we got two projects going on there. One of them is just a micro-surfacing of the old concrete road, so that is what we're gonna talk about today, from Delaware to the east. So from Delaware to Marymount is what we're gonna talk about here, and then from, actually, I guess it's the whole way, all the way, Ohio, I'm sorry, Ohio to Marymount, from Ohio West, which is the other project that we've recently completed a part of, that will have bark, it never had parking, so parking wasn't an issue west of Ohio, but it is east of Ohio. We have a few areas where there is parking allowed that actually parking does occur. So the question was brought to us on, should we restrict the parking on the north side of the road? Currently, there's no parking on the south side, but there is parking allowed on the north side. Restrict the parking on the north side so that the bike lanes could be installed and be, just be a little better, I guess, basically. There's no parking, bike lanes are much easier to deal with, there's no parking, there's no conflicts with parked cars and bikes, the road's wider, vehicle lanes are wider, bike lanes are wider. It is a probably better idea for, as far as the bikes and the safety of bikes are concerned. However, there are a few areas where parking's been allowed there for many years, and there is some parking that occurs there today, so the question is, should we eliminate that parking? Are there other options? So, we sent out a letter last week, and we received a few comments. It was a fairly short turnaround, so it's, but I think the, one of the, one of, definitely one of the comments is typical, what we thought we'd see in the 1,200 block of iron, old houses, narrow driveways. There are alleys in the back, and so a lot of people use the alleys, and driving it every day, you don't see a lot of people park there, but you do see it sometimes, so it's not often, but it's enough to where, okay, it's, it's an issue that we thought, you know, we can, we can designate parking zones in Salina, but it's enough of an issue, we thought we needed to bring it to the commission. Some background on parking, this is an arterial street, Iron Avenue is, it's one of the few that we actually allow parking on, so in looking at our, our normal arterial street network, you know, it's Knight Street, it's Ohio, Broadway, Crawford, Magnolia, and Schilling, so you just don't see parking on those roads, typically not allowed at all. So iron functions a little different, differently than some of those other streets that I just mentioned. We do allow parking on our minor arterials, which is Ash, Cloud Street, Santa Fe, those type of streets, so it's, it is somewhat inconsistent to allow parking on arterials, but it is something that, Iron Street's been like that for many, many years. So the two most affected properties are an apartment complex near, I think it's Wisconsin, they have adequate parking in the back of their apartment complex, they have a parking lot back there. It's just, it's convenient to park on the street and park out in front of those apartments, so that is one, one area where we have talked to the property owner there, agrees that there, or talked about adequate parking in the back, but for convenience sake and for his property, his residence that, or his renters, they like to have the parking on Iron Street, so it's a short section that they, that you'll see cars parked on Iron Street. If you look at the aerial map I sent you, it pretty much tells the tale. I tried to circle the two areas, and I don't know if I can get the right page here, let's see, page, it's page one.
Dan, it's also on the screen.
Oh, good, yes, it is. Thanks, Mike. Just to the west of Delaware and east of Connecticut, those are the houses in question. Those are the ones where you'll see, on the, on the Google, that's just the Google map, so you'll see one car parked. I kind of circled it, but there's one car parked out there today, or typically. And then to the east, should go further, thanks, Dean. That's great. Right there, that block, right in there. These people don't, don't have parking on their side at all. This is the south side of Iron Street between Connecticut and Delaware. Parking isn't allowed, so there is a question, well, I mean, if these, if they can't park here, are they parking across the street, maybe? Are these people parking out here, maybe? There is an alley behind, and an alley behind those houses where there's quite a bit of parking that happens, and people use that. And then as you move to the east, there is really no other parking along here, everybody's got parking lots or parking, it's just not, hasn't been an issue, but, Mike, can you move that thing to the east a little ways? We'll go down to apartments. Right there, I believe, yes, that's it. Between those two streets, right there. So, and they have a big, pretty big parking lot in the back, even some covered parking. So what I've given you today is a letter from the prop, from David Miller, making the request, kind of showed you on the typical sections of iron, what it would look like if we allowed parking or didn't allow parking. The street widths would go to 11 feet if we allowed parking on one side. 11's still pretty typical. 12 is, is normal for a, for a vehicle travel lane. 11 is still within the guidelines of street widths. Seven-foot parking is narrow, but it's, it's within the guidelines as well as a five-foot bike lane. It's narrow as well, but it's within the guidelines. If we didn't allow parking, then we could go with 14-foot lanes and six-foot bike lanes, 14-foot vehicle lanes and six-foot bike lanes, so that is, that's the question before you today. Let's see. I don't know if, see, Mayor, you has any more to add, or that's, that's about what we have at this time? Commissioners, I think when we, when we looked at it, we realized that we could accommodate both parking on the north and the bike lanes, as Dan mentioned, and you'd be talking about 11 and a half-foot lanes, which is adequate, but when the, when the request came to us, we wanted to take another look, and ideally, if we were looking at creating an arterial street from scratch, we wouldn't have any parking on the street at all, because it's arterial. This collector might think a little bit more about it, and certainly residential, you'd expect to see parking. I think the, probably the biggest question is, is the parking essential, or is it just an additional parking option for folks there? If it's truly essential to access property, we wouldn't want to eliminate any access to property, that wouldn't be our intention whatsoever, but if it's simply, it's additional and it's just more preferential than, from that perspective, I think staff believes that we'd be better off to have the wider lanes, the wider bicycle lanes, and eliminate some of the potential interaction with the parked vehicles and bicycles, but those are, that's kind of the way we're looking at that. So I think you may learn more, I know there are people here, probably both for and against, you may learn a little bit more about the parking utilization, I presume, from that. We'll find out. One further thing to note, west of Ohio, similar houses, short driveways, smaller driveways, parking isn't allowed on the street, and they utilize the alleys or side streets, so it does seem like it can work that way. So as the same manager mentioned, is it more of a convenience or is it necessary? We don't believe it's necessary, based on what's happening to the west of Ohio, but it's been a convenience for a long time. Thank you.
Thank you. I have a quick question.
Yes.
Go ahead, Commissioner. Commissioner, go ahead, whoever.
I just wanted to ask, how many, how many homes are in there between, is it Delaware to?
Connecticut.
To Connecticut?
Mm-hmm.
There's just four or five I'm seeing on the map, and
Right.
And there is no parking to the west of that intersection?
Correct.
As you approach Ohio?
Yeah, I can see how many is on here, but let's see. So there's, the two ends have their accesses actually off Delaware or? Okay, it's, oops.
Connecticut.
Yeah, Connecticut.
Or into the park, maybe.
Lakewood. Right in here. So here's Connecticut.
Connecticut.
There's Delaware. There's my off one. We're looking mostly at this block. I think this, yeah, this is, this is Ohio here, here's Casey's. So we've never seen parking in here at all, so it's really just Connecticut to Delaware. And these two ends, the one on each end, they have their access off the side street. So you are really just talking about one, two, three, four, maybe five houses in between each, each end. Yep, there we go. Thank you, Mike. Very nice. So, yeah, that guy there has his access off the side street.
You're about as good as that as I am.
Making me dizzy, Mike.
What country are we in now? Get his Google license revoked, that's pretty good. But yeah, here's, here's between Ohio and?
Is that currently no parking on that block?
You know, I don't, it looks like it could be allowed, but it's, it doesn't happen.
Well, it's a tricky spot because of the traffic and also being across the street from the, that commercial, heavy commercial use.
Bus stop, yeah, there's a bus stop takes up quite a bit of area, and then it widens out and there's a turn lane, so it just doesn't, doesn't seem like there's parking allowed. But we're looking east, along the north side, right through here. Now, we're traveling east, and like I said, this house doesn't even access Iron Street. The first house that does is this one. To the left there, you can see it's, it's a fairly long driveway. I don't know if this, it's interesting, we're not running into a car here on this map, on the street view map, but we do see one on the aerial map. Another driveway here.
Well, there are about four curb cuts, it looks like, on that block on, on there too, so, okay.
And as you move to the east, you know, these guys all have parking lots, basically. This guy's got a circle drive, it's never really seemed to have been an issue with parking at his house.
I think it's the other side, isn't it, that?
Well, the other side is no parking.
Yeah, it's no parking at all on the south side, correct. No parking on the south side. So we allow parking on the north, but?
And then up by the apartment complex up here by Wisconsin, it's actually off-street parking.
Lot of off-street parking there. As you get further to the east here, you're gonna see a few cars parked.
Okay.
This is, this is the area that is, we believe is more convenience parking.
As far, as far as the, as far as the off, the on-street parking for those multifamily units, those weren't, those aren't needed to reach any sort of parking criteria limits, are they? Are they all, are all those criteria met on the off-street parking?
For these apartments, we sure believe so. They have a really nice lot in the back.
Okay.
Dean can confirm that or not, but it's, we, you know, I mean, they have adequate parking in the back, don't they? Yeah, they do.
Okay.
Right, right.
Okay. I just wouldn't want to be in a situation where?
Yeah, we forced it.
They use those on-street parking to get their numbers, and now we're leaving them short numbers. Okay.
That would have been good planning to begin with.
Thank goodness, yeah, we got that ahead of time.
Right. Yeah, since we didn't plan well to begin with, it's good.
Things change.
That's right.
Taking advantage of the, of the street.
Well, some of those houses have been everywhere and ever.
To, to my, to your knowledge, there hadn't been any concerns about safety using the parking lot behind the building at night?
Not to our knowledge, no. I mean, we did talk to the property owner there, and he, he understood that, I mean, it's, he's got a parking lot in the back and people use it. There's, a lot of his tenants like to park right along Iron Street. It's as closer to whatever side of the building that is, basically. It's just more convenient. So he, he would rather us not remove the parking there, but it seemed like he was acknowledging it was more convenience.
And I could see the reasons for not putting the bike lane between parked cars and the active vehicle lane. Is it feasible to widen the sidewalk there to move the bike lane up on the sidewalk for that one block?
Possible. Yeah, that's a possibility. Is that, that's it right there? So widening that sidewalk out.
Move the bike lane up on the sidewalk.
Just for the, at least for the one block.
Oh.
I think it would be more consistent just to keep it one way or the other.
Yeah, you are looking at a probably pretty significant project cost, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, we're trying to figure out if there's a way you can allow parking in just a couple of blocks, I guess, that would be another option.
Well, have we talked about parking on Santa Fe, where those, I've seen cars parked there all the time.
Yeah, that's, we're allowing parking there and?
Well, I mean, what would, what's the difference between that and iron?
Six lanes.
We have, we have the width available on that.
It's a little wider, it's just?
Well, it's not that much wider.
The bicycle community, they'll probably come tell you about it, but it's, for them, it's better if you don't have parked cars next to bike lanes. It's just, it's, it's less conflict and less, if, if you don't have to. Now, this is, they just thought they'd ask the question. They understand in Santa Fe, you have to, a lot of streets you have to. But in this case, you know, that question was asked, well, why do we have to on iron? So it's, you're right, it's a good question.
Yeah, it comes back to, in essence, kind of cleaning up that streetscape area and that, that street and those lanes, if, again, it's, we're dealing with a convenience factor and not a necessity factor.
Yeah. Want to ask a couple of questions here, and I don't know if we have to drag Dean out of the crowd or not, but?
He's here today.
You know, they, and, but they pertain to the complete streets concept and how we want to get to that, how we want to try to achieve that with this street and implement that portion of the comp plan that, that pertains to that. But also, if you could maybe speak to connectivity in the sense of not only allowing a major east-west corridor on, on the bicycle master plan, but this also provides some connectivity into the, into the levee trail system as well, and so maybe? I mean, because we're looking at, it's not just do you close the street or whatever. I mean, we've, we've got to sit up here and weigh, what are we trying to do overall, big picture, versus providing what might not be a necessity, but I think it's fair to say, an inconvenience for people that have used it over several years. And just to understand fully what that big picture looks like so that we can hopefully weigh the benefits versus the inconveniences.
Yeah, this bike lane will connect right through here is Lakewood Park, or Lakewood School, sorry, well, Lakewood Park as well, but Lakewood Middle School. So we'll have a safe routes to school trail that'll start here at the bridge and go to the north, and it'll connect to Ohio, which is our Ohio project. Go across the bridge of, the pedestrian bridge up here and go to the north, connecting it to North Ohio, which is our overpass. So good connecting, connection there. The on-street bike trail would get us to the levee, like you said, which is over here, and go south and north now. We also have a Sunflower grant that we've recently received, which will connect in Indiana, is it Indiana Dean, or Deon's not here? It's go straight south out of, I think it's Indiana, Lakewood, Indiana Avenue sidewalk, that's right. It'll connect us to Bill Burke, not Bill Burke, well, Bill Burke ultimately, but also Indian Rock. So Indian Rock first, and then ultimately Bill Burke. So it's a good connector in there, bike lane-wise, and then all the way out to Marymount, which is kind of the end of it to, to a certain extent. But we do have a sidewalk on Marymount now, and Country Club Road is in the future CIP for 2017, I believe. So that, you know, whether we put some kind of a trail or a bike lane on that road is definitely gonna be discussed. And you eventually end up out of town or heading north on East Borough and back on North Street. So there's, there'll be ways to, it's just, that's, I guess, the ultimate plan for bike lanes is we're, they're not just, they are connecting things, we believe. The question, I guess, really is just, we can, we can put a bike lane on iron, no problem, just should we do, do we, should we mess with having parking there as well? Which could be a minor conflict for, for the few cars that do park there and the bikers. You won't have to worry about it as a bike for very much, but a few properties you will, so that is the, that's the concern.
What's the traffic count on iron, that section of iron?
I don't have that. I can't remember if it's?
A lot.
I think it's, it's less than 10,000 cars.
10,000, okay.
I think it's in the eight, eight to 10 range. Cause I think it's eight west and maybe almost 10 east of Ohio. And they're just looking, the Casey's really, there's a lot of traffic, but as you go further east, it drops some, but it's, it's 10 or less, 10,000 or less.
The only, the only thing that popped in my head was that, you know, a few cars that it's convenient for them to park on iron, and you have 8,000 motorists?
Right.
That it's more convenient for them to drive on 14-foot lanes than it would be to drive on 11-foot lanes. And, and it's probably also safer?
Mm-hmm.
For the lanes to be wider.
Well, that's, that's actually, traffic safety-wise, debatable. It encourages faster driving than it does.
Okay, let's just, just stay on convenience then.
Well, it would definitely be more convenient, but?
I mean, it'd be more convenient for 8,000 versus convenient, convenient for 10, is the, I guess, the point I'm trying to make.
Well, I think it's, I think it's big picture, is it a big picture benefit or is it a?
I can tell you, I got the KDOT counts here. 10,006, right at Ohio Street, which is Ohio, basically at Casey's there. That's where the counter was set. So it's, it's fairly busy at that intersection, but it drops to 6,800 as you go east, 6,800 east of the river. So it's, it's in that range.
Okay.
Other questions?
Almost see it as a quality of life, kind of.
Well, I, the way I'm, the way I'm looking at it, and Mr. Stack, maybe you can, you, you mentioned it briefly, but the safer, safer routes to school?
Yeah.
That is through Lakewood Park, so we have, we've determined that we want to take advantage and, and do a safe route to school from iron to the middle school, but would, would it be considered a safe route to school from Ohio out to maybe someone living down on Front Street on, in Ohio? Or iron or?
Well, west of here, we'll have a, a big, a wide sidewalk, which will be helpful.
Right.
So that you don't have?
So that helps on the, a lot of the walking part, but the biking on the way home.
Walking and the recreational biker, and then if you want to be the, the fast commuter biker, you'll have the bike lanes on the road as well.
And, and we're gonna put bike lanes on these regardless. It's just a matter of, is it safer to have?
11-foot lane, 14-foot lane, that's, that's a question, and should we, you know, have some interference a little bit with the bikers and the parking? You know, the, the studies show if you narrow lanes, it makes you drive slower. So that is, that is, you know, a wider 14-foot lane, you know, my speeds might be a little higher. Right now, iron's always been fairly wide, so you can drive fairly easily through there. If we constrict it down to an 11-foot lane, we would, we would suspect that speeds would somewhat possibly go down. That's, that's typically what happens when you narrow lanes or narrow roads.
Right.
Well, you know, I, I go that way a lot, and I, I very seldom see cars parked on the street.
Right. I mean, I drive it every day, so, City Manager drives it every day.
I still see it.
That's right. You don't see it very often, that's correct. But I was surprised that as I started watching it this year due to this, I was like, oh, man, I saw two cars there. Started making you think about it. There's somebody parking in that 1,200 block sometimes, not very often, but sometimes. The apartments we knew about for years.
Well, I wonder if those houses have, you said they have alleys at the back?
They do.
I wonder if they have any parking back there, if they're just sitting in the alley and somebody else comes in and they're?
There's, there's parking back there for those.
Oh, okay, so there is parking.
There's, yeah.
I know there is behind those apartments, but I mean, the old houses.
No, there is, yeah, there's, they've got driveways in the back, some have garages back there, some, some spots that we could actually take a look at it and find out, I guess, a little bit more about it, if, if that's gonna be a question.
Okay, well, do we have any more questions? We can take public comment, it'd be helpful at this point.
Okay, thank you.
There are no more questions, so, okay, we'll go ahead and open it up for public comment at this time. And we just ask you to give your name and address and, and that's pretty much all you need to do.
Abner Purney, 101 Overhill Road. I do ride that route by bike, not a whole lot, maybe three to 10 times a month, depending on my mood. The most difficult part of it really is the intersection at Ohio and iron, because you have a right-turn lane and a through lane going downtown, and then a left-turn lane. So the, the dilemma, depending on the time of day, is to, can you get into that through lane to go downtown and hold your own against the cars? Or should you go up on the rough and narrow sidewalk and take the pedestrian crossing to get over now to the new 10-foot wide sidewalk? In the past, we didn't have that sidewalk. So I would usually try to, to take the straight-through lane. Having a bike lane is, is of minimal relevance to me on that distance, because there's not that much traffic and it is a wider-than-average street. And if there's a lane marked, as there is now, the new ones on, on Fifth and Seventh, I think that would tend to help even if it is against parking. So there is a convenience factor for those few places that have pretty constricted parking on the north side. And so I'd be in favor of going ahead and leaving the parking, but, and going ahead and trying the, the painted lanes. And I'm still confused about what the transition's going to be at Ohio. Are there gonna be painted lanes from Ohio on downtown? Or are we expected to join the, the new wide sidewalk on the north side if you're going toward downtown?
Yeah, Commissioners, they, there will be on the improved reconstructed Ohio, or, I'm sorry, iron from Ohio West to downtown. There'll be both the widened sidewalk, I believe it's an eight-foot sidewalk off the road on the north side, and there, there are bike lanes as part of that road project as well, if you have a choice.
Okay, so there still will be a little bit of tension right there that you, if you're gonna go straight downtown from there by bike, you have to, when you get close to the intersection, you have to take the lane as if you're a car?
Yeah.
To go straight across.
That's correct, and I haven't, I haven't seen, Dan can speak more to the design, but there's a way, when you're in that type of a, a intersection, that you transition that, those lanes together. And so I, he could speak to that more than I could, but I would expect that to occur, recognizing that once you cross the intersection of Ohio, you'll be, you'll have a choice of continuing in a bike lane, or if you should choose, you can take a ramp and go up onto the wide sidewalk.
Okay, I guess I spoke in favor of keeping the parking and painting the lanes.
We got that here. We got you.
I'd just say stay out of that intersection, Abner. Well, you can go down Ash. You can turn right and go down, down to Ash.
North Street.
From where I live, you have three ways to go, and I have gone North Street to go, I have to backtrack a mile to go around the Country Club to take North Street. But I've done that just to see what it's like, and it's, it's bumpy and narrow and, and often trucks going about 65 miles an hour into town on the 35-mile posted road. So that's scary. So, and, you know, life's dangerous and I'm old. I shouldn't be so concerned.
I'm Dave Miller, 133 East Lake Drive. I guess I'm the one that stirred all this stuff up to begin with. But first off, if we don't have to do it, I hate putting bike lanes next to parallel parking. Because, and this isn't gonna happen to me, because I'm gonna ride safe, and I ride a lot, probably 2,000 to 3,000 miles in this town every year. I'm gonna ride where I feel like I'm safe, but you get a kid out there that's unaware, and somebody opens the door, I mean, you're right there on, on Santa Fe. And that probably, I mean, Santa Fe's different, there's probably not a lot of kids out there. On iron, if you put that bike lane out for parking, for me, I mean, and I'm riding that every day. And, and they're right, you start at Marymount and, and you go to Ohio, and there may be three or four cars parked there, which do have another place to park. So if you move it out to accommodate those three or four cars, you're putting those kids 10 feet out into the street. And I don't want my grandkids, I mean, my kids are grown, but I don't want my grandkids riding 10 feet out in that street. And they'll get out there and, and they'll ride to a breast in there, even maybe they're not supposed to, but those kids are gonna do it. And if those, if the cars get the idea that they can ride right up next to that bike lane, the law says, and the city ordinance says, you gotta give that bike three feet. So if that kid's riding right next to the outside of that bike lane, that car's gotta be three feet over in iron and wide enough to accommodate that. If you, you know, on both, if you got a car coming both ways and they're, and they're? If you, you know, on both, if you've got a car coming both ways and they're, and they're giving the bike rider, there's a bike rider on both sides and you're giving them three feet, then you've got like an eight-foot driving lane on each side, which probably isn't. And that's, that may not happen, it may happen. But the whole, whole point is to, to inconvenience three or four cars parked there, we're going to get a much more safer bike lane for those kids to commute to school. And I get to thinking about downtown. I was in Fort Collins here a couple of weeks ago, and that's an amazing bicycle town. Everybody wants to go to Old Town. Well, you guys want to make downtown a destination place. Well, think about that. You've got iron with a nice bike lane up next to the curb. People come in from all directions, hit iron and head all the way downtown. You've got a great job on, down there by Oakdale School with that wide sidewalk. So you've got a path to get to your destination place downtown. I just think that, that, that we're really accomplishing something if, if, if we get rid of that parking and, and especially on that street. Because that can haul a lot of bikes, you know, downtown. So.
Okay, thank you.
Jerry Brown, 210 South State Drive. And Mayor, I'm glad you brought up the idea of looking at the overall picture of it. Because my wife and I, over the last five years, have visited a lot of towns, mostly west of here, out to the coast, that have a lot of bike lanes. One that I like to talk about a lot that amazes me is Missoula, Montana. And Missoula has an old town like we do. It's about six blocks long, the old. We went there on a Wednesday, it was about 11 o'clock. We rented two bikes from one of the 21 bike stores of this town, 65,000 people. And I asked the guy, I said, where should we, where's a good place to eat lunch? And he says, oh, you've got to go down to the Old Town. He said, there's all kinds of sandwich shops, coffee shops, all that stuff. So he said, you can get on any bike lane and you'll end up down there. So we did. And in front of every other store, now the, there, and the other thing he said was, one of the reasons we like bikes, bike lanes here is that it gets more people, a, a desert group of people into the downtown, especially in warm weather months. And in Missoula, Montana, everybody likes to get outside in the summer because the winters are horrible up there. So anyway, we get down there and in front of every other store, there's a bike rack. And it's just a simple thing, it's just a tube coming out of the concrete and back down. And you can chain up four bikes. And they don't use kickstands. In fact, I asked the guy where we rented the bike, I said, it doesn't have a kickstand. I said, I like kickstands, you know, you don't need them. He says, and they don't wear helmets out there. That's kind of, but they don't. They just get on a bike in their flip flops and shorts and away they go. Well, we got downtown for lunch, there were probably 300 to 400 bikes down there. We couldn't find a parking place for our bike. So we had to park on a side street next to an old bank that had it downstairs and had an old railing. There were probably 50, 60 bikes chained up there. Because they can get so many people downtown. And I agree with Dave on, I, I think we've made a lot of considerations since the 60s for cars and so on. We've made very few for bicycles. When I first moved here, we were supposed to have bicycle routes in town. And all they were, were a little sign, a green sign that said bicycle route. There were no markings on the street. And you, there was one over by Central. And I remember going there and thinking, where's the next sign? You didn't know which way to go. Because, and so they finally took them out after a few years. But I want to commend you on putting this integrated plan in place. I think you're going to see a lot of really positive results out of it. Because it'll, I think it'll change the culture and people will become more aware of bikes. You know, if, if you have an, running with a car, the bike rider's going to come out second best every time. So I would agree, I, I think we need to be consistent. As far as running into, I disagree with Dave on one thing. I don't think we're going to run into car doors so much. Because during the last, when we had the parade downtown that you were at, it's usually, you're usually locked up when you try to get out of there with a car. And it's, you know, it's just, traffic's awful. I was in that parade with my two grandsons and my wife. And we rode down to the hospital, I'd parked up by the, the library. When we were done down by the hospital, I got on that bike lane and I zipped down while all those cars were barely moving. And that was just great. I just felt, man, this is the way to go. A guy opened his car door on me. But since we've got like six foot, seven foot wide, I don't know, I think they're 64.
76 inches.
There she goes. Says my.
Before I came in.
76 inches, the guy opened the car door. And if you ride just towards the outside of that lane, you, he doesn't, you, you miss it altogether. So I don't see that as a problem. I really like the bike lanes and the Sherrills. It, it gives me a, more of a feeling of safety when I'm riding it. So thanks a lot for your diligence in putting this together.
Okay, thank you.
Judy Larson, 715 North 9th. I'm not a bike person. In fact, I'm selling my bike. But I, I need to speak out in favor of the bike lanes. I think that if the people that park on iron had no other option available to them, it would be one thing. But since they do, I think we need to err on the side of safety for the bike riders. And, and I disagree with the gentleman. I think that kids or even adults riding a bike and, or a driver of a car might not notice when he opens his car door. And, and the kid on, on the bike will get smacked and end up in traffic. And, and it won't be anybody's fault. It'll just be the fact that there was no safety bike lane and he, and he was allowed to park there. And there was no safe place for the kid to bike, ride his bike. So I think just to keep from inconveniencing three or four people, who cares? They have another option. I mean, they have another option. If they didn't have another option, it would be one thing. But they have another option and we need to keep the streets safe for everyone. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello.
Hi.
Mr. Mayor, Committee, Commissioners. My name's John Kleiman and I live at 1215 East Iron. I'm the guy with the cars out parked out in front of the house. So I just wanted to come down and register my official objection to the idea. We do park there. I have two nearly grown children that usually park their vehicles out there. And then my wife and I usually park in our driveway. We do have a fairly long driveway. It's over that way. We can park in our driveway. I would like to present an idea that occurs to me. Well, first of all, it's been stated that you have room for the bike lanes as well as the parking. And I know my next-door neighbor in particular, I've talked to him about it, he does not have a driveway. He has room for two cars in back of his house. If he has any visitors and he has a very big extensive family, they come to visit quite often. They'll usually park out in front as well as us. The situation for us is, is that if we're all in our driveway, we don't have parking in the back. It's Chinese fire drill to get out of there. And so we're backing out all the time when that occurs. And I think there are dangers inherent in a lot of that, especially with my children. But, um, so that's, that's my main point. I guess the other thing I'd say, I don't know, I mean, how many of you have off-street parking in front of your house? If, if, if a commission decided, hey, we're going to take that away, it's definitely a loss for the people involved. And I think there's a value to it that, that, you know, that house and that row of houses have. Now, everywhere else, they've gotten used to not having parking. And that's, you know, they've got that settled. For me, what I'm looking at is if this goes through, I'll probably have to pull out a garden, a significant fence and create parking behind my garage. And so there'll be a significant expense for me to be able to accommodate the traffic. I also, I have a lot of visitors. I run a little dinner theater group, Who Done It, mystery theaters. And so I get, a lot of people like to come to our house and, and they, you know, where do they park? So I just wanted to express my opinion about that. And I know that ultimately, if it's safety, I don't think we're as big a concern. But if it's just for the, I mean, the biking community, I understand they want to have a safe place. I think we can coexist with the bikers, all five of them. So, um, thank you.
Mr. Kleiman.
Yeah.
I just wanted, me up here.
Yeah, there you are.
Anyway, I, I appreciate you coming because I know that you and I spoke a couple of years ago during the planning of this.
Yes, on the original plan.
And I know that, and I wanted to go out there myself and, and watch. And I know that I've mentioned it with staff that, you know, I know there is a concern. I know at one time, you, I think you said you had a garage there and now have a garden. And, and, and it is, and what I said earlier, that, that I recognize it is, it is an inconvenience for some people that do. And I, I know that directly because you have come not only here today, but early on in the process. And so thanks for being here today, but also for being there during the planning part of it too. Because a lot of people don't.
Right.
Participate in that fashion and just wanted to thank you for that.
Well, thank you.
Does your family use the alley back there?
There's no parking behind our house in the alley unless you want to just run over some bushes and.
So you can drive down there, but there's no place to park?
No.
Okay.
There would have to be some significant landscaping changes to be able to do that.
Is, is your house unusual along that stretch in terms of off-street parking?
The guy to the west of us, he has significant parking behind his house and rarely parks on the street, except for when he's having some kind of shindig, he'll have some people park out there. The, as I said, the guy on the east side, he only has room for a couple of vehicles in back of his house and, and he has a garage back there. But just, he, he's, most of his garage is full of stuff. So he usually parks in a little spot that they have created back there. I believe the house immediately to the east of the brick house there, that's a rental. And I've never seen that they usually have someone parking out there. And I, as you said, the people on the corner, they park around the, on the side, or they park on the street on the side if they need to. So it's really just, you know, four or five houses right there, or maybe even just three of us. But it is a significant situation for us. And obviously, there's this sort of push-pull for us. We're looking at, you know, does this decrease the value of our house not to be able to park in front of it? Or does it increase the value of it to be, have a nice wide street with a bike path? Well, we don't know. But it is of a concern to us. So I would almost suggest it's kind of like having an easement, you know? We, we have something that we think is valuable to us and we would prefer not to use it, uh, lose it. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, is there any more public comment? Okay, we'll go ahead and close the public comment portion at that time. Bring it back, if you've got questions that you.
Yeah, you know, I'm, I'm listening. My, my original thought was that, you know, let alone little kids driving down Ohio Street. You know, I get nervous driving by a parked car, I mean, driving, riding a bike past a parked car. And I tend to veer out towards the center of the street when I go around a parked car. And if it's a narrow street and there's a car that's going to pass me, I get a little concerned. I don't ride often enough to feel confident I'm going to keep my balance. I feel like I'm going to get sucked into the parked car and never, it's happened. But, uh, but I'd be a little more concerned about kids coming up on a parked car and veering out further. And, you know, at night, you know, this time of the year when it's dark in the morning and kids are going to school, they're not going to be easily seen, even adults aren't always easily seen. But this, the last gentleman reminded me of something I saw in Chicago early this year. Around the University of Chicago in Hyde Park, the bike lane is actually next to the curb. The parked cars are, I'm going to make up a figure, five feet towards the center of the street from the curb. So it looked very strange. At first, I said, why are these people parked in the middle of the street? Well, I realized they're not parked all the way out in Middle Street. They are parked a bike lane distance away from the curb. And it's just, it looks very strange if you're not used to seeing it. But it's probably the safest thing for the, for the biker. In that, you know, they're protected from traffic because there's a row of parked cars between them and they're close to the, to the curb. It, it's, it's, it looks very weird. But it, it's just another possible solution. You know, every time you think that you've figured out what's good for the greatest number of folks, then you realize, well, the guy doesn't have a driveway, you know, we're not, probably not going to go back and put a parking space in his backyard for him. So I guess in the next two or three minutes, I'll have to make up my mind. Those are the thoughts that are going through right now. So somebody please convince me one way or the other. Well, Mr. Purney came up and, and talked about the way he, he wasn't really concerned about the, the situation. But I, I started thinking, well, he's, has a whole lot of experience behind him. And he's encountered enough things that he knows when he has to pay attention. And, and having a bike lane outside of a parked car to him is not necessarily a big deal. But I'm, I think that it's important to think like we're all 13-year-old kids. And what are those kids thinking about? And are they paying attention? And are they being, practicing all the, the safety that Mr. Purney does when he's on his bicycle? And, and I don't think so. I think we have to provide that extra measure of safety for the kids to make sure that they are safe. And we are, you know, we're providing a world-class, Kansas-class bicycle lane along iron to get all the way to downtown. And I think that having a lane that is consistent east of Ohio that is equally as safe and impressive and easy to navigate would, would be a, a good thing for the, the city and for the bicyclist. And I, I think it would encourage more biking, frankly.
Well, I'll weigh in with my two cents. I have been tagged by a car door before, but to me, this is not really about the bike lane itself. I, I think iron is an important part of the transportation grid. And when you've got open space, I just think that's safer for everybody, not only the bicyclist and the car rider, car driver, but also the people that are pulling in and out of the driveways. You've got the open view that you can see as you travel there. And to me, that's the more important aspect.
Okay.
You know, you're talking about 13-year-old. Yeah, I think those of us approaching the other extreme of life probably don't have judgment any quicker than the 13, or, or more likely to be worried about our balance or ability to navigate in a, in a narrow area. If, if a citizen was needed to create parking behind their house as a result of this, are there any, I'm just, tax breaks or considerations or, or, or financial assist, not assistance, but blocking the word I want to use.
Well, that particular.
To build it, just because.
Revitalization.
They're having to do it because of this action.
No. Wouldn't that be, that's a neighborhood revitalization area with.
Yes, it would be, but you would have to have a value that would increase. And off-street parking probably would not be classified.
They wouldn't consider a garage addition to be.
Garage could be, yeah, I mean, yeah, we're assuming, I think you're assuming, and I was too, just an open parking area or even a slab. But which probably wouldn't affect the value enough to measure a significant tax. And what that is, is it offsets the increase in taxes from the improvement on the property, doesn't decrease the current level of taxes.
Because trying to sell a house with no parking would be, I would think, more difficult than.
Well, there is the drive, there's a driveway there.
Well, for the one, you said the one does not have a driveway? But he has parking behind. Behind, okay. Okay.
Does the garage on that property there widen to two, to two, is that a two-car garage or right there?
That's my garage.
Yeah, that you have highlighted there?
Uh, it's a garage full of stuff, but, uh, I never got two cars in it, but it is, it looks like it could.
Okay, it is two, it is a two-wide, okay.
But it, it, my driveway widened slightly just past the house.
Okay.
But I actually have a fence across there.
Okay, so the driveway widens at the garage and then narrows back down when it comes, obviously by the house, it's only room for one lane. Okay, thanks. I just was repeating that for the record because there was no mic there, so. Okay. I have a quick question engineering-wise, and that is, is just talking about the, the width of the face of curb to face of curb. What is the difference between the face of curb width, which looks to be 40 feet here on this area versus west of Ohio where we have it reconstructed already? How wide are those? Maybe an easier question, what are the, what is the width of the travel lane? Because you have travel lane, turn lane, travel lane, and then bike lanes on either side.
And that'd be west of Ohio?
Right.
Yeah, we struggled with that. It's, it's about the same 40 feet. So we did, without the parking, you have a four-foot bike lane on each side. You have a, we have the center turn lane there as well, and that's, that's narrower. And then we have, I can't remember exactly what the lanes are, two 10s maybe, 2028.
So just any thought to, I mean, is there any reason why we don't just do that program down? Iron East? I mean, why do we go to the 14th, 14, 6, 5? I mean, any, any, any use for a, I mean, it's all the same pavement width, it's all in the stripe, right?
Right.
So is there any benefit to having a center turn? I mean, if we're going to eliminate the parking, is there a greater benefit to say, hey, let's keep the four-foot lanes that are consistent and let's get a turn lane in there? Is that, would that help safety?
It's a possibility. We, um, yeah, just haven't had that, we have never had a, have not had a turn lane east of Ohio before. But I guess we could, I guess that's a, that it could be a possibility.
I mean, if it's, if it's just striping, I mean, the?
It is, you know?
A turn lane onto?
Well, it's a turn lane.
They have a turn lane onto Ohio, right?
Right, as you move east though, the turn lane, there's not, it's just a center stripe. So it would be whether we wanted to create a three-lane section east of Ohio basically, which we had one west of Ohio for many years, we just haven't ever had one east of Ohio.
There's not as much activity there either.
I guess I don't know, yeah. I mean, we do have turners, I, I follow it every day. And you have sometimes somebody who doesn't get over far enough, you can't go around them, so I, it is a possibility.
There is, it is wide enough to where there's a lot of going around them.
Yes, there is. That's, that's what's nice, you can just go around them today.
Yeah. Does, is, is there any, I, I guess that's something to think about. And I guess it's not, that's not critical to the question, do you remove the parking or not? But if you are going to remove the parking and you're looking at saying, well, do you need a 14-foot wide?
The thing, the thing we ran into too, this is why it was easier west of Ohio. It's that curb joint. So if you look at those typical sections, the curb is typically two, two and a half feet. There's a joint right there. So if you have a four-foot bike lane, that puts you riding right on that joint between the curb and the pavement.
Okay.
And so east of Ohio, we will have that problem.
Because we're not removing the curb?
We're not, 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 not where we're talking east of Delaware. Now, west of Delaware we are, we'll, we'll have the possibility to have a monolithic curb. We're pouring a monolithic curb, mono meaning the curb and the pavement are all one. You will not see a joint there, so that, that helped us a ton.
So this will give us a good three to three and a half feet of uninterrupted space with the, with the bike lane east of Delaware.
Right, and that's what we had to use, six feet. Six feet was kind of what we had, that's, that's, that's taking into account there's already two foot of curb and gutter, two and a half feet. So you've got three and a half, like you said, three and a half feet to four feet of good space there, which is adequate.
Yeah.
So that, that does really, I was like, how come 14-foot doesn't, we can't divide that into any way to get three lanes out of it? So I was trying to figure out why the six-foot would have to become four, but then that puts us on a joint.
Yeah, that's, that's fine at that point, yeah, I don't want it on, yeah, I don't want it there, so. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, okay, bring it back for action.
I move that we authorize the change of no parking zone currently located on the south side of Iron Avenue from Ohio Street to Marymount Road to no parking on both sides of the roadway to accommodate bike lanes.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion, the second, to authorize the change of no parking zone currently located on the south side of Iron Avenue from Ohio Street to Marymount Road to no parking on both sides of the roadway to accommodate bike lanes. Okay, any further discussion?
Uh, just one other comment. When we saw the aerial and, uh, there is a garage on the property as well. Um, you know, it's, I, I have the same situation in my house. I, I went for 30 years without using my garage and I finally decided, I'm going to park a car in there. So I just pulled out all the junk and I have room to park a car in there now. And it's, uh, it's actually a pretty neat deal. Um, so it's, so it's, I, I think, you know, if you, if you have the ability to park, but you just choose to use your property in a certain way, then that makes the decision a little, a little different as well for me.
Okay. Any further discussion? Okay, seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That passes 5-0. And again, uh, thank you, John, for being here. I know it is, it's an inconvenience for you, I know. And I think myself, and I think the rest of the commissioners probably are looking at what is the overall benefit? And, and so at least that's my reason for, for affirmative vote on that. And, and, uh, thank you again for, for being here. Okay. Thank you all for your comments as well. Okay.
Item 7.6, resolution number 15-7285, authorizing the mayor to execute a real estate contract with RD LLC in order to acquire property as part of the proposed downtown fieldhouse project.
Okay, Mr. Laupin.
Thank you again, Mr. Mayor, Commissioners. Uh, the item before you is, as Shandy described it, uh, it has been a long process as we went through to identify the actual property that we would want to use for the fieldhouse and, and the, all the, the roads that we traveled to get there. As of today though, uh, we bring it to you for your consideration. Um, a little bit of background info, on the 27th of October in 2014, you guys approved a public-private partnership for support of a downtown fieldhouse in resolution 147146. Uh, accordingly, on the 13th of June, 2015 of this year, uh, we approved, or you approved, an architectural agreement with SFS to begin the design of the project. Um, in August, we brought our construction manager at Risk on board. So we have all of our team members, Frue is also a part of that, they came on at the same time of SFS. So we have been in the design process. We're currently in schematic design and the process is moving along pretty nicely. As part of this, we did have a Phase 1 environmental that was done to verify that it did in fact, uh, didn't pose any great risk or anything that we would deem questionable or, or problematic. That came back and, and indicated that, uh, a very, very low risk, so we feel comfortable with that. Another thing that was a big hang-up for us to get this in front of you was the new market tax credit piece. And Mike and all of his communications with both SB Friedman and some of the legal folks there, trying to get the answers there that, hey, how can this work for us? Can we do this? Can we purchase this and still be able to leverage those dollars back into the new market tax credit package? And based upon those conversations, uh, we do believe that is the case. Um, outside of that, the, the total purchase price right now is 628, 22971, to be precise. So again, 628, 22971, uh, that, you know, that covers a, a host of different pieces. As part of that, the physical property, the building demolition, the site improvements, hazardous material abatement, utility fees, survey and cost, engineering services, loan interest, property taxes, Phase 1 environmentals, other miscellaneous expenses, et cetera. But with that, I would stand for questions and, uh, go from there.
Okay. Any questions for staff on this at this time?
I didn't mention, one thing I might say is, we do have the check from the Greater Salina Community Foundation in hand. So this is all private funds that are paying for this. An important note, and we do have that check in hand.
Now, you listed all those items that were contained within the purchase price of that? Where is that listed on here? Is that?
That is listed in the fiscal note.
In the fiscal note.
Just listing the, uh, the different pieces that are part of that.
Oh, okay, that's right. I knew I saw that somewhere.
Deon, just for, uh, or clarification for the commission and the public, um, the, when we look at that, the actual part that's related specifically to the acquisition, not some of those other, that is intended to reflect the actual original acquisition of that property. And in other words, the, the entity, the person that we're acquiring this from, if you remember, committed that when we sell it, there are certain fees and stuff, or when they sell it or put it into the hands of the city. And again, this is using private funds, not tax dollars, but there's not a markup. I think it's really important because, to give credit for that, because there isn't a markup, the, the costs, we see our actual costs associated with it, out-of-pocket costs, but there's not a profit markup in that. And that's really important because, as you know, even though it's not tax dollars in this case, these are privately raised dollars for the specific purpose of putting the property in our hands so then we could move forward with our project. And that's, that's kind of how good communities do things. And, and that's, I just wanted to make that statement because I think that's a really big thing and, and there was a big risk that was taken at that point in time. And now we're starting to see the pieces start to fall in place. And, and I think we'll be pretty excited about this hopefully in about a year.
Great point.
Okay. Thank you, thank you for that addition. Okay, questions for staff? Okay, uh, we'll go ahead and hear a little public comment at this time. Anybody from RD here? Check in the mail then? We're going to, we're going to mail them the check? Oh, okay. Okay, seeing none, we'll bring it back for action.
Mayor move, uh, Thompson, resolution 15-7285, authorizing the mayor to execute a real estate contract with RD LLC in order to acquire property as part of the proposed downtown fieldhouse project.
Second.
Okay, have a motion, the second, to approve resolution 15-7285, authorizing the mayor to execute a real estate contract with RD LLC in order to acquire property as part of the proposed downtown fieldhouse project. Any further discussion at this time? And seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That passes 5-0. And thank you, Pat Beatty, for being here. And also thank, uh, Brian Richardson as well for his participation in this. And Deon, as always, thank you. Okay. Going on to other business now? Okay. Well, we'll get ready to go there. Commissioner Hardy, do you have an announcement? Anything going on tomorrow that you want to? There's a civic luncheon tomorrow that Randall's son is a part of. And I was giving, see, I was giving him the free?
That's on Thursday.
It's on Thursday?
Yeah, it's, it's part of the K-State luncheon series. And, um, my son will be coming out and he's an urban planner, um, works in Kansas City and he'll be talking about cities of tomorrow.
Okay, also, I just want to, uh?
K-State Salina.
K-State Salina, and it's a bring your own lunch or you can actually buy lunch out there as well. So, uh, I'll just mention that another fall fix-up went really well. Uh, we got a lot of landscaping done up north and, and, uh, Commissioner Davis here was cleaning out the river and hauling, and he sacrificed a pair of tennis shoes in the process.
And a part of the river, I must, I should be embarrassed to say, I didn't realize existed.
Couldn't see it for the woods.
I know it's there now, you're right.
It, it was hard to see, but, but they had over 100 people show up. Kansas Wesleyan had their, uh, field dedication for the new stadium and had a sold-out crowd. And, uh?
And that was great, too.
To the residents who haven't been by there, you really need to drive around there. It's a really, they, they did a great job. And, and they were very appreciative of the support of city staff and of the city commissioners. So just to pass that along to all of you. Um, and so with that, I think, uh, we, oh, one last thing. And Deon, since you're standing up here, are we still doing the Hawthorne Park public bill to the playground? People want to help build Hawthorne Park Playground. We have the play equipment, the taxpayers bought the play equipment. We're looking for people to help show up at Steve Hawley Park to help put it together on Saturday. And you can come from eight to noon or from, from noon to four. And just come by, we'll have the tools and everything, but it should be a lot of fun. And hopefully we'll get a lot of people to show up on Saturday, October 10th, uh, to help out, so. And that's the Veterans Day thing too, there's a parade, there's other things, there's a lot, there's a lot going on. But, uh, as I like to say, if you can't find anything to do on the weekend in Salina, you're not trying. So, all right, I think we're ready to hear a motion to go into executive session.
How much time do you expect we'll need?
Twenty minutes with the explanation that that is the purpose of isolating a specific topic that may result in public discussion or action upon your own discretion. So we would, uh, suggest that the first item, the first point, right?
Then knowing that, I will move to recess and to executive session for, uh, let's just make it around 25 minutes, to discuss with legal counsel matters subject to the attorney-client privilege for the reason that public discussion of those matters would waive the privilege and adversely affect the city's interests and matters and reconvene at 6:10 PM.
Second.
Okay, motion, the second, to recess into executive session for 25 minutes and reconvene at 6:10. All in favor?
Aye.
And, but there may be business following this, so. Thank you. Okay. We're probably going to need about 10 more minutes if somebody wants to make a motion to extend for 10 minutes.
I've moved to extend the executive session for 10 more minutes until, I guess, let's make it 6:25.
Okay, 15 more minutes then?
15 more minutes. Depending on the clock.
Okay, motion, the second, to extend for an additional 15 minutes and reconvene at 6:25. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Well, that'll go over.
Yeah, go less than that.
He said we need, um, ready? Okay, we're on. Anybody want to extend this fund?
Mr. Mayor, I move to recess into executive session for 14 more minutes to discuss with legal counsel matters subject to the attorney-client privilege for, for the reason that public discussion of those matters would waive the privilege and adversely affect the city's interests and matters and reconvene at 6:45.
6:40?
Forty.
Forty, yeah, 14 minutes.
We're going to take, do I have, do I have a second? Okay, I have a motion, the second, to recess for an additional 14 minutes and reconvene at 6:40. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, at 6:40, we're back in regular session. And, uh, looks as though we may be taking action on an item here, so we'll, uh, hold on just a second. Okay, if we can get a comment from staff, please.
Thank you, Mayor. And Commissioners, Mr. Andrew will be back momentarily with, uh, copies of the document. of the document for your review. And I also want to, as you're aware, Mr. Nathan Madison, representing the owner of the property, I'm having you look to make sure I give you the correct address.
104 North Santa Fe.
Yeah, 104 North Santa Fe, is here, and if we can have just a moment, I suppose I could go ahead, I was wanting to make sure that Mr. Madison had a copy of the document that I'm looking at.
Okay. Real quick, before we get started, if we are going to go ahead and hear this, we should place this, have a motion to place this item on the agenda?
That's true.
For today?
That's true, Mayor.
Okay. And for reference, we are going to refer this, to this as ordinance number 15-10806.
Okay, thank you.
And this would be... Well, let's just see if we want to get that on there first. You want me to give the long title of this ordinance for the record? Would that be helpful?
That would be fine, Mayor, and it also would be a matter of the other aspect, as you're setting your agenda, would be a determination of whether you find that a compelling public purpose exists for the purpose of considering it on both readings today.
Okay. So, this is a consideration of placing ordinance number 15-10806, an ordinance declaring a moratorium on the painting of currently unpainted masonry exterior surfaces and the painting of any exterior surface involving a change of color on any building located within the Lee District, and that would be a first reading.
So move.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion, the second, to consider on first reading ordinance number 15-10806, and any further discussion, seeing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, we'll place that on the today's agenda, and now we will hear that item.
Thank you, Mayor. If I may, I will approach with a copy of the document that has been marked with one modification. I believe the ordinance contains in Section 1 the findings that set the basis of your consideration of the ordinance. I, if you don't mind, I suppose it's one of those situations where, given the contemporaneous or extemporaneous aspect of this matter, whether you prefer to, Mayor, or if you would rather I, I believe someone should probably go ahead and read those proposed findings so that there's no question about the basis upon, the basis of your action, should you wish to enact the ordinance.
Okay, I will go ahead and let you lay out the findings.
Okay. Thank you. Section 1 indicates that the governing body makes the following findings. A, Article 10, Chapter 2 of the Salina Code addresses the responsibilities of the Design Review Board and city staff in the protection and enhancement of the exterior appearance of property located within the Salina Business Improvement District Number 1, commonly referred to as the Lee District, by review, consideration, and potential approval of a required certificate of approval. Actually, is that a certificate of compatibility?
Right.
I'm sorry. Am I correct, Mr. Andrew, that that certificate of compatibility, I'm sorry? Finding B, Salina Code, Section 2-208, provides for the approval and amendment by resolution of the governing body of design guidelines for downtown Salina. C, Resolution Number 086480, adopted by the governing body on January 14, 2008, adopted the current design guidelines for downtown Salina. Finding D, Salina Code, Section 2-209, provides for the approval and amendment by resolution of the governing body of a design review board matrix identifying whether projects are to undergo DRB consideration or staff administrative consideration of the issuance of a certificate of compatibility. Finding E, Resolution Number 086481, adopted by the governing body on January 14, 2008, adopted the current design review board matrix. Finding F, on August 14, 2015, the owner of 104 North Santa Fe, identified as the owner, filed application number CC15-8 requesting a certificate of compatibility to allow the replacement of the existing Santa Fe storefront awnings and the painting of the two-story Santa Fe brick masonry facade of the building located within the Lee District. Finding G, at a meeting of the DRB on August 28, 2015, the DRB, one, made its findings and conditionally approved the awning replacement, and two, postponed consideration of the proposed facade painting to its September 10, 2015, meeting to allow for exploration of alternatives to the painting of brick and mortar. Finding H, at a meeting of the DRB on September 10, 2015, the DRB approved the repainting of painted brick on the rear facade of the building, but made its findings and denied the request to paint the currently unpainted brick front facade of the building as an unjustified exception to the design guidelines for downtown Salina. Finding I, a letter dated September 23, 2015, from legal counsel for the owner, two city planning staff advised the city of the owner's position that because the exterior painting proposed by the owner does not require a building permit, the approval of the DRB is not required. Finding J, the public interest is served by a moratorium of duration limited to the time required for the governing body to, one, seek legal review, two, seek input from relevant advisory boards and the public, and three, make any necessary policy determinations clarifying the application of the requirements of Article 10, Chapter 2 of the Salina Code and the adopted design guidelines for downtown Salina to the subject application and other future applications relating to the painting of currently unpainted masonry exterior surfaces and the painting of any exterior surface involving a change of color on buildings located within the Lee District. Section 2 goes on to establish a moratorium on the painting of currently unpainted masonry exterior surfaces and the painting of any exterior surface involving a change of color for which a certificate of compatibility has not been issued on any building located within the Lee District. Section 3 provides that, authorizes the building official to order the work stopped in the event of a violation of the moratorium ordinance. Section 4 provides the publication summary, and Section 5 addresses the term of the moratorium, which I expect you might wish to discuss and determine what would be appropriate, an appropriate timeframe, should you wish to adopt the ordinance.
Okay. Thank you. Is there any questions for staff at this time? As to the date, the number of days, I know it was referenced to above, Section J, I think it was. What would be a logical time period to be able to move through that process?
I'm not best suited to answer that. I think others are better suited.
I think when we, when we look at that, we do want to obtain the input from the Design Review Board and from Salina Downtown Inc., who serves as your BID Board, in fairness to them. We'd have to look at their meeting schedules, and/or depending on the timeline, you have their ability to schedule a special meeting, just to get their input. It might be very simple, it might be, we still like this, we want to do it, just know that, or it might be, we don't, please take that into consideration, or, you know, we don't really know, but we should, we should get their input, and then it would come back for final drafting, and then for your consideration. I think, as Greg mentioned, I mean, I think, I don't, I don't know that you're talking about a complete overhaul of the language, but there will be some fairly significant changes, potentially.
Forty-five days?
Gary believes 60 would be best. Mike, your thoughts?
When you factor in the board meetings, I kind of concur, 60 is probably more accurate.
I think the preference would be 60. If the commission felt like you didn't want to go beyond 45, we would work with those groups to get them together as quickly as possible, probably outside their regular meeting time, to move this forward.
Okay, because, and just looking at the language of the, in Section 2 of this thing, I mean, I think it's pretty clear that what we're trying to do here is to get, to get that statement or the application of compatibility and the certificate of compatibility, the requirements of those in line with what the intent of this design guideline is, and also probably the best, I'm assuming that the best mechanism that we can use to preserve our options here is this moratorium. I mean, we don't have a whole lot of options here.
Well, I think it's a situation, Mayor and commissioners, where the position taken by the owner and the indication of the owner's intent, based upon their interpretation, rather than this being dealt with strictly as a legal issue, the moratorium presents an opportunity for you to deal with it as a policy matter.
Okay.
And that, I think, is the public interest, the basis upon which the public interest is best served.
Okay. I appreciate that. Is there any other further questions of staff at this time? Okay, we, we'll open this up to Mr. Madison, you have some things I'm sure you would like to share, and I would just let you know that, and go ahead and come up at this time, and we are strictly looking at this in terms of a moratorium and not really making any judgment on the application that you have for, you know, your paint color, or your, or any of that work, so...
Wait, what?
And so we appreciate you sticking around, so please take the time that you need.
I've never seen the wheels of democracy work so fast.
Well, your name and address, just for the record, please.
Okay. Nathan Madison, 609 Starlight Drive, Salina. I represent Maureen Madison, also, the owner of the building is, I think it's 104 North Santa Fe LLC. I'm really troubled by the decision of the board, or the commission, rather, just because this seems to fly in the face of a couple longstanding principles here. It seems as though us raising an issue in this ordinance is a recognition that I think the board didn't have the authority to impose its will on the painting of the building. And I just think the spirit of this commission isn't to punish someone for exercising their existing rights, which is all that's really been done here, is someone saying, I'm sorry, you don't have the authority to do that, and we're gonna have to, you don't have the right to tell us how to paint our building. Now, and I respect the intent of the commission and the city to have a cohesive presentation of downtown, I think it's great. I personally think that the color of the brick is not attractive, and that's, you know, subject to people's own taste, and I get that. But I, I'm pretty shocked by the fact that the letter now has resulted in an ordinance that's resulted in a moratorium on authority that I don't think the board had, or the commission has. And I have a lot of questions. I'm not steeped in the municipal code, I am an attorney, but I, I don't deal with it very often, and but for, as one could probably conclude, Mrs. Madison's my mother, but for her coming to me and saying, hey, Nathan, what's going on here? I said, I'd look into it, and I was astonished to find out, yeah, they don't have that authority, at least as I interpret it. And I also think it's important that, I have notes here, I mean, this really comes down, in my opinion, also, the Fifth Amendment of the Constitution, property rights, and there's a narrow avenue in which the city, through Home Rule, which I think is a law passed by the state, says you guys can dictate and authorize and oversee stuff and limit people's rights. I get that, that's totally understandable. But to really retroactively apply stuff, that's not what I think is fair and appropriate. And I don't have the, all the sections in front of me to really give a thorough analysis legally of this, but just off the cuff, in my gut feeling, it isn't good, so, that's all I have to say.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And I don't know if you care to address any of that, or not. I would just say, from, from my seat and being on the board, as far as sort of a retroactive nature of this thing, I think, as we said before, you know, we're looking at options to preserve the intent of what that application and compatibility and that requirement of the code, and the way I understood it is that there had been an understanding that the application was necessary and so on, so that's the intent that we're at least trying to preserve here, and hence, that's our action. I mean, we're not sitting here saying, there is no code, and there was no intent, or there was nothing there, and we're making this up because we don't like a certain decision that was made, or the, or the letter, or any of that, so. I just, for the, for the legal thing, and that's why, we have an attorney, we're not attorneys, but when we're, when we have an opportunity to take action, that, those are the things we're looking at, and that's what I'm looking at, is what is our intent, and how can we preserve our, to implement our design guidelines, the way I think they were intended to be designed. So we want to call timeout, take a look at those, and that's what this is intended to do.
And I want to say on the record, I do respect and appreciate the commissioners, and the attorneys, and the city manager, and their time on this matter. I just, as I, I think I've echoed already, that I just, I did not think an ordinance would come out from a letter I wrote, took me 20 minutes to write, but I'll have to analyze this, and I think there are some, the attorney in me says there's still areas where I think we can keep painting, honestly, I don't think we're gonna do that, but I'll have to discuss that with the client. I would ask that the moratorium, which is, seems to be unavoidable here, try to be accomplished, keeping in mind when painting can be done, I don't, the timeframe now, probably, once winter comes, it's, you're just not gonna paint, at least a building of that size and proximity. So, if it could be done within 30 days, that would be preferable, so that would still provide a window for the painting to be done, assuming that the review board finds it acceptable or not, or however, however it plays out. I mean, if the board says no, then we'll have to go to a different avenue. But anything beyond that, I just wish the commissioners would take into consideration the fact that that really does basically push us into probably spring, to being able to realistically paint it, and that the owners of the building are the ones who ultimately bear the costs of, you know, making the building presentable, trying to attract customers, and making it appealing, and like I said, it's, when it comes to the brick, that's a subjective taste, but I don't think that having, expanding the design board's authority is appropriate here, so, that's all. Again, thank you for your time.
Okay, and thank you, too. Okay, and thank you, too. Okay, we have any further discussion up here on this? There is no other public, so we know that. And thanks for sticking around. Okay, so, bring it back for further discussion or action?
Discussion. As far as this particular applicant is concerned, we could very easily be right back where we are sixty days from now, even though the code has strengthened, the DRB's authority is delineated, in which we have then made this applicant wait sixty days to come back to this same position, assuming the DRB would still refuse his request. And I'm just wondering if on a, any practical basis, anything is served for this applicant replacing the moratorium, or just deciding on his decision? Not that the, the language in, I may be using the wrong term, the, the code and DRB's authority doesn't need to be reworked, but I don't see us avoiding a repeat of the same meeting sixty days from now. I mean, that's, has nothing to do with whether we like whatever color he wants to paint the building, but assuming the DRB wouldn't change its language, its opinion, even with new authority.
Well, the moratorium doesn't specifically delineate this project. It is on any and all currently unpainted masonry exterior surfaces, and the painting of any exterior surface involving a change of color for which a certificate of compatibility has not yet been issued. So, you know, because it did address that the back of the building was being repainted in brick, and, and so, you know, my only, my only question would be is, I, I guess if that doesn't, that doesn't affect that, they can go ahead and repaint the back of that building, or?
It's already been approved.
Well, and the back fits with the guidelines that currently exist.
Right.
Their disagreement with the front is probably gonna remain unchanged, because we're not changing the, the guidelines, we're just changing their authority to make certain decisions.
Well, that's correct. But I mean, I don't want to inadvertently stop them from paint, repainting the back of their building that was approved as independently or part of this.
No, the back's not included. It's been approved.
Right.
This is only for un, previously unpainted.
Section A of the ordinance notes that at the September tenth meeting, the DRB approved the repainting of the painted brick on the rear facade. So, I think you would be proceeding on the basis that painting the rear is, is approved.
It's not all part of the same application, though, is it? You know what I'm saying?
The back is not previously unpainted masonry. It's previously painted.
Right, but I'm saying, they, they had three things they were looking at on their application, awning replacement, painting the brick facade, and repainting the already previously painted. So, where they issued a certificate of, of compatibility on, can they go ahead and repaint the back without running into this moratorium?
Yes.
If it's, if it's not been an issue, I assume it will be. Is that fair to say?
A certificate of compatibility has been issued for the awning replacement. That work may proceed. A certificate of compatibility has been issued for the rear repainting. A certificate of compatibility has not been approved for the front painting.
Okay. Super.
Well, actually, though, this moratorium does say the painting of any exterior surface. It doesn't, it doesn't differentiate between previous.
But, well, it does for which a certificate has not yet been issued, and it's been issued, so we're.
Yeah, yeah, that was a.
The back was issued?
Yeah.
Okay, I'm sorry. Okay, thank you.
Yeah. Okay.
Okay, that's, that's the handwritten part. Okay.
If it's helpful, possibly in response to Commissioner Davis's point, utilization of moratoria, if that's the, or I, whichever is the plural, is certainly a well-founded basis in the law for, as you described, calling a timeout. It is a timeout. The, we certainly do have to be watchful for, in this regulatory context, of matters of due process and some of the considerations that Mr. Madison addressed. But we are in a regulatory, certainly a lawful regulatory sphere here. We are not taking any action that involves any form of deprivation of a property right. The situation is simply a timeout, and is certainly a recognized means of approaching these types of situations.
To add to that, Commissioners, in this case, the, Mr. Madison referenced the, the word retroactive. Well, retroactive would, would typically apply if something is already painted. We said it's not supposed to retroactively go back and change the rules, and then could cause them potentially to change what's already been done. In this case, as you know, it has not, that facade has not been painted because initially they were denied a certificate of compatibility by the Design Review Board. So, there has not been any work on the facade that has been done. So, you don't, you're not in a retroactive situation. It is truly a timeout of a situation here and now.
Well, the timeout is to see if the DRB does have the, or to strengthen the language, potentially strengthen the language that the DRB does have the, the way to make a decision on an issue of this type. I mean, that, that, that's the question. He, he's saying that the Design Review Board didn't have the authority to, to make that decision.
Correct.
Anyway.
That's the position that they've articulated. That's what.
So, we're taking the timeout to reword our.
Code.
Code, to either include that authority, or whatever reason, not include it, but to settle that issue.
You, as the governing body, ultimately have the discretion, of course, in terms of the way that language reads. Right now, as I mentioned in, or as set out in subpoint J, what would seem to be necessary are the policy determinations clarifying the application of the design guidelines for downtown Salina to the subject application or others, so that there is reconciliation of the code language and the design guidelines, however you all ultimately determine that should be.
All right. And maybe just playing devil's advocate here, but if we change that code so that the DRB does have the authority to make that decision, what changes with us, with respect to this particular applicant when he comes back sixty days later?
The only point of clarification I want to make, Commissioner, is the language you just used suggested that, that there is not that authority. We are trying to address an ambiguity, what we acknowledge to be an ambiguity in relation to that, to the interplay between those two.
Understood. Okay.
But it, where we are at the end of the moratorium is entirely a function of the policy determinations that you all make over that period of time, based upon input or whatever, however you ultimately wish to address the matter.
Okay, 'cause I, I would assume that we would not decide that the DRB does not have that authority, or.
Well, I think we.
It's possible decision, but I wouldn't see us going through this to come up with that as the final decision. So, we then would be, assuming no one's changed their opinion about the color of the brick, we're, at least for this applicant, back where we are right now.
Yeah.
And I guess where I'm going is, is it easier to ask for a blanket moratorium, or a moratorium on any other case past this applicant's, or after this applicant's? And that's probably not gonna change his outcome, other than which month he paints.
Yeah. Commissioners, I want to make sure I'm understanding the question, but the, okay, if the moratorium is approved, and that means that there, those who would wish to paint unpainted masonry, or change the color of other areas to be painted within that area of downtown, would not be able to do that until you determine, as Greg mentioned, from a policy perspective, what you want to do with this. And again, this is prompted by presumed ambiguity in the language of the code that utilizes the design guidelines. And staff would have told you before, before that was questioned, that that code is sufficient, didn't have reason to look that deeply at it from a legal perspective, and that the intent clearly was to make sure that the Design Review Board has the authority that we're talking about. So, if you would have asked us at any time between, you know, a few days ago and before, we'd say, "Well, yeah, that's what the code's for, is to allow them to do that." Certainly, that's been questioned now, which is why we feel a timeout's necessary to take a closer look at it, and if, if necessary, modify the language to address that in, in the policy framework that you wish to have it addressed. If so, let's presume that you say, "Okay, let's not make any change from where we felt we were before, leave that, make sure that it's drawn properly, drawn up properly, the ordinance is, to grant the authority to use the design guidelines." And I think it may be safe to say, based, unless there's a change in the information that goes to the Design Review Board, that their decision would, in essence, would stand. They denied the certificate of compatibility for painting of the facade. And if that happens, then the code would allow for the applicant to appeal the decision of the Design Review Board to you as a city commission. And in that case, your role would be to, on appeal, to look at their application of the design. We, there's no question about the authority at that point in time. It's just that you get to be the highest authority, have the highest authority position in the pecking order, and therefore, you could overrule if you want to, using the same guidelines. And so, if you look at the guidelines and you feel that they wouldn't have properly applied them, you could overrule. We'd think that if you feel that they did properly apply them, that you would agree with that decision, regardless of preference of color, 'cause the, the guidelines really, obviously, don't get into that. So, it could be back with you, and, but the question could be different. The question would be, what is your thought on the appeal as to regard to their decision using those guidelines? But, but keep in mind, with the moratorium, this would, clearly, the, that applicant contesting our code prompted the, the look and prompted the action that's put in front of you tonight. But it, that, that moratorium does affect anybody who would fall into the, the body of what the moratorium, the target of the moratorium from this point until the moratorium timeframe is, is expired, and you have better guidance, or guidance that you want to put in the code. So, so it does apply to everybody. It doesn't just apply to this circumstance. It's just, that's the triggering circumstance based on what was going on at the time.
All right. So, either way, we'll eventually have to decide on the color of the bricks.
You may, you may. It's possible. I mean, we can't, we don't know for sure whether there'd be an appeal to you, but if there is an appeal to you, then certainly you'd be in that position, utilizing those same guidelines.
All right. Thank you. I hope there was someone else out there who didn't understand it.
They can't appeal the decision to call a timeout through the moratorium to you. I mean, in essence, any, anything you can, you do can be legally challenged if they don't feel that you should, that you have the right to call the moratorium or to do it right. But when we, when we're thinking about the building and the bricks, the, let's assume we get past the moratorium, and there's no question, in the end, the Design Review Board had the authority to say, "No, we don't want you to paint the bricks." They can appeal the decision of whether to paint the bricks or not, in what color, to you later. After we get past the moratorium, they still have the ability to do that. Then you would take that up, and you would use the same guidelines that were provided, that the governing body adopted a few years ago. You'd use those same guidelines, and basically, put yourself in a position of probably saying, "Hey, did they do their job right, using these guidelines?"
All right. Thank you. Thank you.
Okay. Anybody care to make a motion on this?
Mayor and Commissioners would ask that the motion clarify the period of, or the term of the.
Correct. Okay. Okay, I would, just as a suggestion, I would then, the motion would be for an ordinance declaring a sixty-day moratorium on the painting of currently unpainted masonry exterior surfaces, and the painting of any exterior surface involving a change of color on any building located within the Lee District.
For which a certificate of compatibility has not been issued?
Well, that is, that'll be, that's contained within the ordinance, so I don't think you need to.
I'll need to add that one.
Yeah.
All right. So, moved.
Well.
Second.
Okay, a motion in the second to approve on first reading, ordinance number ten dash, or ten fifteen. Okay. Got a motion in the second to approve on first reading, ordinance number fifteen dash one zero eight zero six, an ordinance declaring sixty-day moratorium on the painting of currently unpainted masonry exterior surfaces, the painting of any exterior surface involving a change of color on any building located within the Lee District. Any further discussion?
Well, I think sixty days is dragging it out an awful lot. Like he said, if, if they do get the opportunity to paint it, they'd like to paint it before December.
Well, I think we can do a sixty day, but if the, if the process takes less than sixty days, we can take action and lift the moratorium.
That's correct.
Sorry, we were just confirming, yes.
So, I think that probably, we know that probably we'll get this thing moving.
Well, sixty days is giving, is not calling them in on a special meeting. It's waiting until their next meeting, which may not be till November. So, that's what I'm saying. I just think that's, I mean, staff could call them in on a special meeting, right? Or not.
Well, and they still can. They still can, if that's, I mean, if we, if we want staff to expedite this, then I say we can set this and, and ask them to expedite it. But I think that, you know, you have to have notices and quorums and people set up for the meetings. And so, I think if we, that's why I asked first, if we, would forty days cut it? And, you know, we need to be realistic about how long these things are gonna take, because we don't want to have to come back and ask for more either. But, but I'm with you. I mean, I, I think probably staff knows that this is, you know, time is important on this one, and.
Yeah, I think Commissioners, whatever the timeframe you put, I mean, if you say thirty days, we, we know we have to hit the ground running. If you say sixty days, but you, but you make that motion, and then get that taken care of, if everyone agrees, and you say, "But we want you to expedite," meaning that we would like you not to wait for the regular meeting unless it's coming up very soon, but to ask the, the boards in question to have a special meeting, get their input, so we can, and at the same time, be thinking about how this might be drafted, if, if revisions are necessary. We would certainly do that.
Okay. Sounds good.
Okay.
Presumably, any policy determination you would be, you would be making would be by ordinance, and simultaneously with that ordinance, an ordinance essentially terminating the moratorium upon the effective date of your enacted policy would keep that in tandem.
Right. Okay. Okay. First reading, all, all those in favor?
Aye.
That passes five-zero. Now, I believe if we wish to declare a compelling public interest to have a second reading, we're gonna need a motion to declare that public interest.
The only thing I might add, if I may, Mayor and Commissioners, is that certainly inherent in the nature of a moratorium is a matter of urgency, usually regardless of the matter.
Right.
And that would be, I think, the basis for your consideration of the motion.
Okay. Thank you.
Well, can I just second what he said? Probably not. But, listen, I would move consideration, second reading tonight, on basis of a compelling public interest.
Okay.
To consider ordinance number fifteen. I don't have the number, fifteen dash one zero eight zero six.
Second. Okay, I have a motion in the second that a compelling public interest exists for a second reading on the same day of ordinance number fifteen dash one zero eight zero six. Any further discussion on this item? Okay, all those in favor?
Roll call.
Roll call. No, this is just for, to hear it on the second item, so we're gonna do the second reading now.
Oh, okay. That's right.
Yeah.
Aye.
Okay, that's five-zero. Three-zero and a delayed two.
It's the left-handed side of the table.
Still, still five. Still five.
It's those guys down there.
Okay. Do I have a motion for a approval on second reading?
Move that we approve on second reading, ordinance number one five dash eight zero six. Eight zero six.
Ten eight, ten eight oh six.
Second, ten zero, yeah, ten zero eight oh six.
Okay.
No, ten eight oh six.
I, I did it earlier. I did it earlier.
Thank you.
Second. Okay, I have a motion in the second to approve on second reading, ordinance number fifteen dash one zero eight zero six. Okay, get a roll call on this one, please.
Commissioner Crawford?
Aye.
Commissioner Davis?
Aye.
Commissioner Hardy?
Aye.
Commissioner Ryan?
Aye.
Mayor Blanchard? Aye. That passes five-zero, and I think in line with Vice Mayor Crawford's suggestion, we'd be looking at an expedited process on this, and then we'll go from there, so.
Very good, that's what we'll do.
Okay, thank you very much, and anybody want another executive session, or shall we adjourn? Okay. Motion in second to adjourn, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That passes five-zero, thanks.